Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's Monday, June the 9th, 2025, and we'll call our workshop to a quarter. And first, discussion regarding Landpasses County Appraisal District, FY 2025-2023 proposal.
Mayor and Council, good evening. We have with us tonight Juan Salcedo, he's the chief appraiser for the Landpasses County Appraisal District. He has a quick presentation to run through with you guys for the LCAD FY 2025-2026 split.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I was asked to come in and present our budget. Okay, so let's turn the page. Okay, so I'm going to give a little bit of information of what we do and how many parcels we do. How many parcels that we appraise. Obviously, the appraisal district has 721 square miles that we appraise. And we're doing this with two appraisers at this time. Parcels in 2025 were 20,532. And I'm not going to read the other ones, but that's the historical. Sometime in 2012, we changed populations a little bit over 50, 20,000, 50 people. Was the population in 2012? Okay, market value in 2025 about 20,532. 6.926 billion dollars at market value appraised in all of Landpasses County. We have had a steady increase. There was a big increase in 2023, and that was due to the software change that we went from PNA to Hair Discover, or if you call PAX, Chakamis software. That was a huge increase, 41%, 2024, 5.85%. And then this year, we're at 10.52% increase right now. Okay, new value, we added 85 million, 569,140. For this year, we're down a little bit. In 2024, we're at 110,305,350, partly because we don't have appraisers. Again, we only had two appraisers through the 25 year. In 2024, we had a few more appraisers during that time. So we can't keep up with the amount of work that's happening. Ag, there are two categories that we have the most work in is ag. We are appraising 4,871 parcels that are ag-related, either wildland or ag-related. Homestead is another one that we have. We're managing 6,711 accounts in Homestead. And we just did a Homestead audit that we were supposed to start January 1st of 2024. Mandated by law, and we just started in January, December of 2024. And we're approximately, there's 700 accounts that came back that needed new applications or something, that new driver license or something that needed to be audited. And they're still worth it to us. This was our vendor, so we did contract with a mapping vendor. They took over the mapping system. They went back to map it, do the GLO, general land office data. They drew over 50,800 parcels in one year. That was started late 23, late 23, and then went through all of 2024. When they took over, when basically a month before I came in, they did another 641 new parcels, bringing us to 16,475 parcels. They had 81% of the county mapped. The state standard is 95%. And that state standard has been around since 2010. So we're not even near the state standard of 95%. And this is a report that they gave us. This kind of gives us an idea of what our challenges are right now. So in January 1st of 2025, they worked 291 parcels, 53 Ds, 36 flats, 35 sketches, and 167 corrections. In other words, it took 167 corrections to fix 291 parcels. And you'll notice that the corrections continue to feed up our time. The vendors communicated with us that they're contracted for 40 hours a month. They're exceeding 60 hours a month. They're not charging us for it, but they're exceeding 60 hours a month every month, just to correct. In February, we, they worked 142 parcels, 20 Ds, 2 flats, 2 sketches, and they required 110 corrections just to get us there. March, 190 parcels were worked, 36 Ds, 6 flats, 0 sketches, 148 corrections to get us 110. April, 240 parcels were worked, 67 Ds, 2 flats, 1 sketches. It took 140, 170 corrections to get us there. I do want to get your attention to the number of the missing parcels. So after they corrected these, we still have 3,557 missing parcels or parcels that cannot be identified by the CAD or by our GIS vendor. That brings us about 881% complete. Keep in mind, the state standard is 95, 95%. These, this is a, we had a vendor to kind of see where the activity is at. These are sales between 2020 and 2024. You can see that there's a lot of activity in Copper's Cove, some inside the state limits, but very sporadic outside of the county. A lot of these are rural properties that are being purchased and then subdivided into smaller plat- plat subdivision. And this is kind of what we're talking about, what they look like. In, from 2019 to 2023, we've had 932 homes that have been platted out. And right now, we're sitting at 398 from '23 to current. Or just '23 alone, not including the '24s and '25s. Another 398 properties or homes that are going to be built. And that will there, it's '12, '13, '14. This is what we see. To the right is a plat subdivision when it's barely getting started. And then the one on the left is a brand new one outside. It's going to be a whole home park. But then the two at the bottom, then you're going to see, this one's inside city, the sandstone CD. This is what they look like after. And we only have two appraisers doing this type of work. The amount of properties that are being subdivided, platted, and built exceeds what the appraisal district can do. And I'm going to go fast over these because I don't want to hear what's going on in the city of Landpasses. But Copper's Cove, everything in red is what we could not identify. So our goal as the appraisal district, we started going up with the smaller cities and then worked with the county and then worked with the school districts. But the cities, we felt were the ones that needed a little bit more attention and probably the ones that were hurting with value or were the properties that were unidentified, is what I felt when I first got here. So we started with the cities. So inside the Copper's Cove, we found 19 properties, 3 million at market value, 2.25906 at appraisal value, and others up to the tax. We did, 260 acres were corrected. All, everything that's in red was corrected, almost everything. At an average of 14,933 and loss level, or loss level. To that, to the city of Copper's Cove, we did a 10-year analysis. They lost 174,000 green and yellow. Kinder was a little bit less. Everything in red, we could not identify. The green items, we thought maybe were or were not inside the city. 2.16 properties, 2.3 million, 2.3 million didn't have any exemptions. So 51 acres were corrected. And an average loss of 8,098 at $64,000 loss. City of Lomina, taxing unit corrections was a little bit less. They had their properties, 23 acres, 1.1 million at market, 1.172 at taxable value. There were two exempt properties, were 21,000, 29,000. All of these excluded those out. So their average loss was about 3,076, 41,010 years. Now, I think Landpasses is next. But before we get into City of Landpasses, these are properties that were, could not be mapped or could not be identified. They were on the roll, but they were missing the taxing unit. In other words, that taxing unit wasn't receiving any tax dollars for 20, 30 years. It's unknown how long. Okay, so we had pending, City of Landpasses has been pending for a while. It was the most difficult one that we could process. There were just too many properties that are missing. There's a lot of information that's incomplete in there. So we identified 195 unidentifiable or unmapped properties inside the city of Landpasses. I took out, total was 8.3 million. There was 5.43 that are exempted properties. We took those out at 2.953180 at a market value. That left us with a taxable value of 2.8 million only in 27 properties that we were able to identify of 195. Your average loss was $9,555, and a 10-year, 10-year loss was 101,562. Keep in mind, probably 20, 30 years, we've never taxed these properties. Correction was 246 acres core that was corrected out of 27 properties. We did find three that were removed that we believe that the tax payers should not have paid city taxes. We removed those, that was 153,000, 10 dollars. There was 18 that were correct. We just mapped them, but they didn't, they weren't receiving the city as a taxing unit. That left us with 41 properties that currently we have in the hands of the vendor to try to clear it off. And that leaves us with 160 that the CAD, I'm sorry, 106 that the CAD does not know where these properties are located. We cannot identify them. We just fixed one of these, one of six, last week. We had to use our attorney to do title work. This property has been incorrect since 1962. Just to give you an idea. This is your, your levy values as of today. I ran those at 318 this morning. Basically, these are the numbers that we're kind of keeping track and giving them to you as our preliminary values when we gave them out, I think on the 25th or on the, around April 25th. These are your starting numbers. So for the city of Landpasses, we're appraising 4,543 properties. Your market value is 798, 791 million, 926,243. That is your taxation. Your projected to, their levy or your revenue is 2.529667 million dollars this year, which is approximately, go ahead. That's the county, you're going to excuse the county. These are the county-wise that we did without the city of Landpasses because I didn't have them at the time when I did this. So county-wide, we corrected 53. This is not included years. We corrected 1,009 properties. 10-year revenue loss, 294,9912. You take that, divide it by your annual loss, county-wide, 53 divided by 28,000, yeah, 28,096. Your average loss per property is about $546, rounded. So you take that amount with the 3,557 properties that we can not identify. The potential loss revenue, 1.941356 million. And remember, out of those 355, you have 106 that's still unidentifiable. So Landpasses has the degree of unidentified properties by unit, by taxing. The appraisal district has had several challenges. I think the one to bring the attention to everyone is that, we talked about the survey population. The compter's office rates appraisal districts on tiers based on population. We were a tier-three appraisal district, very small appraisal district. But the population changed in 2012 to 20,050 people. That pushed us over to a tier-two appraisal district in 2012. But we've been budgeting our appraisal district as a tier-three all the way till 2024. And these are the tiers. Tier-three, population of less than 20,000. Tier-two, which is where we're at now. We were there in 2012, but we have not been budgeting appropriately. The appraisal district over to 2012, it was 890,000 dollars.
Aren't we only 22,000? Not 120, we only have 22,000 people in the county, correct?
Right, but it's a population of 20,000 not to exceed 1,000.
Right, but it's a lot closer to theory than it is. 22, 2,000 people is not that much in the tier-two.
Right, but that's not how it's, that's not how it's rated. So a tier-two, that's how the compter's office is going to grade. That's how we get graded with the school district property management and our mapping duty, which are our, they're our audits. So we fit, we fit in this category. And we should be budgeting as a tier-two.
Right, but your budget jumps so much. I'm sorry.
Well, yeah. Let's see, what is that? Okay, so this is the, at the very bottom, they're going to see what tier-two average budgets are. So the compter's office already did the homework for us. In 20, they do what's called operational survey. We're always a couple of years behind on that. But in 2023, their operational survey for a tier-two, 80, there's only 80 appraisal districts out there that are tier-two. The average budget is 1.499 million to 1.68 to 11 million without collections. And this appraisal district not only appraises, also collects almost $40 million in property taxes. Go ahead, turn the page. So this was a tier-two budget comparison, also using the compter's office we also use there so we can see where we're at. We're on the lower end. Landpasses, next to Shelby, and between Lanham. So last year, we were at $890,000 in appraisal and collection budget. So we should be closer to the, to the line that you see running. That's where we should be budgeting. Go ahead, turn the page. This is what a tier-three organizational chart looked like. This is what, this is the way, when I got here, this is the way that your chart for the appraisal district looked. We had two people in collections, one supervisor, two people in collections, one supervisor, one appraiser, one appraiser slash collections, and a mapping director. Go ahead, turn the page. This is what, this is what the International Association of Assessing Officers standard states that, this is how you calculate how many people you should have in your office. So you take 25,000 divided by 25,000 parcels. If you have staff that is trained and educated, that's the average 25, I think, one of the more than 1,500 parcels for appraiser. But if you take the 25,000 parcels, 533 divided by 2,500, you get 10 people. You need 10 appraisers. You need 10 appraisers to completely appraise this county property. So this is what a tier-two organization should look like. Chief Appraiser, we made a little bit of restructuring, but Chief Appraiser, we have three people in collections. One Appraiser Supervisor, two appraisers that were currently budgeted, and we have one vacant, I'm sorry, no, we're budgeted for three. We have one vacant appraiser, and we need to add two more appraisers. So a total of 10 people to run this office. Go ahead, turn the page. Yeah, testing, so we don't have what's called a Level 4 Appraiser. It takes five years for an appraiser to get certified. Their first mid-year certification is a tier-three. And that has a, the one that says appraisal Level 3, that has a 45, 45.26% pass rate. Level 4 Appraiser has a 53.29% pass rate. It's not easy to find certified appraisers. We were running the office, we have two Level 3s now, which will currently be Level 4s. We had to fast-track them for training because they were about to expire on their time, and we'd already asked for a year extension. So you can only get a one-year extension one time. And we were about to expire that, so they're on fast-track training to become Level 4 Appraisers. And they should have that completed by the end of the year. Someone had asked, what does it, what does it, what does it take or what does it cost for your turnover rate? We found this on the Texas Workforce data. They said that, salary.com had a real good way of it. Basically, it's one and a half time of your pay. So if you have a $50,000 employee, by the time you replace that employee and train, it's going to cost you $100,000. You have $80,000 employee, it's going to cost you about $160,000. So we're averaging about two, two and a half, maybe three people per year that, that is our turnover rate. That's been there for a good while. And we have not had, other than the Chief Appraiser, you have not had a Level 4 Appraiser probably in a long time. Okay, cost allocation. We're going to get into the budget portion now. That was the budget, that was last year's budget, 89470, including collections. Last year's revenue, projected revenue was 37 million, 813. We collect, we were projected to collect 36 million, 005. This year's budget, we're asking for 1.58, but we did a much better job at separating it because it's important to know how much are you spending for collection and how much are you spending for appraisal. So we did an 80/20 split, which we think is appropriate. The appraisal district collection, once you allocate it, is 1.271 million, 427. And that is without, that is without collections. That's 80% of the budget. We're projected to bring in 40 million, 5659860. And on collections, we're projected to collect 38 million, 90294. And that's costing us about 317,856. That's the 20%. When you take the total levy times, the total levy being the 40 million, 559861, we're at 3.91% combined levy to appraisal. That's all, that's our cost. We're less than 4% to all the taxing units. Collections, we're, and then we broke it down, 0.78 just to collect, less than a percent. And then appraisal, we're at 3.13%. And yes, this is a substantial increase on the budget, but the shortfalls that we've had in the past, we have not been able to pass property management, and then you got past personal last year. We're not able to keep up with any constructions that are going on. So the amount that you're losing exceeds the cost of funding the appraisal district appropriately. The, the growth is not going away. I've driven all over this county already. This year alone, we almost got 300 homes.
Yes, and one subdivision.
And one subdivision, 300 homes. We did not complete a re-appraisal plan. We have not completed the re-appraisal plan probably since 2020. And that's how appraisal districts are graded. The ability to appraise the county in a two-year, a one-year period, two-year period, no more than three years. We have not finished a three-year appraisal plan since 2020. We're always working two, three years behind. Everything that they're looking at now is, is stuff that's behind. We can't keep up with the new, the new value that's out there. And then add on top of that, all the corrections that we have to make, all those missing bids that we're going to have to find and add value back to the taxing units. So when we did the cost allocation, we did it strictly for Landpasses. And in Landpasses, we had a very hard time working on that ourselves, including the vendor, working on Landpasses, the mapping vendor. But this is what we came up with. So on the, we're earning a gain in 2020 versus 2025. In 2024, you had 2.90254 million in revenue. Right now, you're at 2.520913 in revenue. So that's going to add $430,659 to the city of Landpasses. The cost of that is 47. When you take the difference between last year and this year on our budget, it's going to cost you $47,290 to the CAD. You're going to keep, or the levy that you're, that you're projected to have is 383,369. County-wide, if you move over to the right, 40, 34 million, 151,816. The levy for this year, 40 million, 6x6, 861. So the difference is county-wide. All the taxing units, we'll see, 6.505 million and 46. The difference to the CAD, once we, once we subtract that. Our, our portion for the new budget is 749,560. This, these numbers that I gave you correspond to, this is what I give all the taxing units at the beginning of the levy process or the beginning of the levy numbers. This, these numbers are based on last year's tax rate. So I know that there's some, there's some misunderstanding. This does not increase your taxes. And this is not increase your, your, you don't have to increase your taxes to get these numbers. When we do these levies, it's always based on last year's tax rate. So this is a starting point for the city of Landpasses where we left off on work. The work that we were able to accomplish and that we're still keying in. We have not finished keying in, we're still keying in, and we're noticing people, I think 150 maybe plus homes. So these values are only going up, they're not going down. This is without a tax increase. This is what you're projected to, this is your projected revenue.
First of all, Salcedo, how will the new legislation affect this with the homesteads?
We're already at about 700 accounts. That's a very good question. I don't have those numbers yet, but what is happening, we'll be removing more homesteads than we're adding. So you will receive some benefit from there.
Are you talking about the legislation coming up?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
100 to 140, and then also potentially the disabled. Reason, I don't know if that, I don't know all the particulars on that. Another written letter to be signed. That's a question, too, that could be entered into this.
Yes, it'll, it'll, it will affect you. It'll maybe, the school district will be the one that will be greatly affected. It does take effect this year after the November election. Basically, homestead over 65, it's going to be 200,000. If it's your homestead, you're going to 140. And that's a benefit to the taxpayer, but it will affect some of the taxing units more greatly with school districts. So I don't think it would be likely. City of Landpasses will be affected in 2026 with the BPP redditions going from 2,500 exempt to 12500. with the BPP reditions going from twenty-five hundred exempt to a hundred and twenty-five hundred. So, and I'm working.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. So right now, a business can be exact at the twenty-five hundred, but it's going to go to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I'm working on those numbers for you now. But in 2026, countywide, we're probably looking at about sixty-one million dollars.
That's for personal property.
For personal property revenues. And I can have those numbers specifically for the city of Lampasses. This is where we, this is the levy, this is what it looks like for 2026. You've seen the levy that goes with the budget. Go ahead and turn the page. This is where we're at now. These are the things that we need. We need two more Appraisers. We were budgeted for eight staff, we need at least two more Appraisers. We need to focus on staff training, retention of employees, competitive wages and benefits. We need to improve our cybersecurity, we're currently working on that. We need to continue working on our mapping projects on the left-hand side. In 2024, one of our board members wanted to see how much we had spent in comp time. We had about eight hundred and fifty-five hours, and used to have averaged twenty dollars over seventeen thousand. In 2025, we're already at a hundred and seventy-nine comp hours, an average of twenty dollars, we're at three thousand five hundred eighty. So we're going in the same direction because we have one less person. In 2020 and five, we have one less person. Turn the page. We want to digitize the appraisal records and collections. There's a room that we can't even get into. The two on the top, that is supposed to be our record room. That was twelve thousand, two hundred in our budget. We accounted sixty-one file cabinets to take about twenty-five percent of the office space. We want to get rid of those. So we'd like to digitize our records so we can take that office space back and put our conference room in there. And where we have a current conference room, we can turn that into an office space. We have a lot of building repairs that are needed. The roof has been leaking for a while, I think the bid came in right around fifty thousand dollars. We do have air conditioning repairs, we repaired it three times this month. That average costs us two hundred dollars. And the vendor orders, the air conditioner is not going to be called. There's somewhere between twenty thousand dollars to replace that air conditioner. And we'd like to have two small mini spits in the back because we have a server and everything gets really hot where we have all of our computer systems. We need current healthcare furniture. We need to do bi-annual aerial flights. We're on a three-year flight pattern, but the growth that you're having, we can't keep up. It's not possible to appraisal this county with three-year flights. We need to go to a bi-annual flight system. And that's equal to you, so we're able to use those flights in conjunction with the surrounding counties. They do it bi-annually, and they'll give us their data on the opposite years. Anything that orders that county, except for the, there's one or two counties, you call the other county, give us their data every other year. These are cat totals, what we talked about, six point nine two six seven oh seven billion dollars. Countywide, we want to rent these numbers back in May twenty-third, and then it should be there, it should be the last one. These are just what categories that we appraise. We came in at eighty-five million in new value, that's at Little Coll. I think that we probably shouldn't have doubled that. Easy. Go ahead and do that there. Is it in the million? Okay, that right there. So these are your numbers, that's this document that I gave you. The two hundred, two point five, two ninety-six-six million, that is using last year's tax rate, that's what you projected. This is my first A R B year, I don't think we're going to lose one point five percent here and higher. So these numbers are pretty solid. We've done enough corrections in the system after the conversion. The software that we probably had to now handle what the growth that you're having today. Without staff, without building, without the right software, we couldn't get the job done. I think we're on track to get the job done. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Just a little bit of the software that you're speaking about. That's the stuff that they jumped in a couple of years ago.
So that's what he's talking about, this software. The software that we got a couple of years ago is the reason we're able to pull this map. So the map, along with our software company, those two contractors were very closely together. So now we're able to look at the map versus the roll, and they're sending us those highlighted maps y'all saw so that we can do research on those properties because now they're kind of talking to each other. Whereas the old system was not capable of that at all.
So the software that y'all got a couple of years ago was incomplete?
Well, the software that was converted, it's called PNA software, and we're currently in Harrisville County software. That software could not handle a level two appraisal. So the version was very much needed. So now what we're doing is we're working through the items that didn't get corrected. When I got here in November, I asked the vendor to give me an account of twenty thousand, five hundred fifty-three, two thousand nine hundred, sorry, nine thousand, five hundred parcels did not come through correctly. I have worked in half of those already. The office has worked about forty hundred of those corrections right now. And that's why we're able to leave this because this software is made for a tier-two appraisal district.
This is already presented to the local board.
Yes.
And the school board.
We're heading in next.
Okay. McCarron.
County Board, present it. Yes, county and Kepner. And the Board of Directors have approved the proposed budget. We'll move on to the public hearing and final budget in July.
And with a new Appraisers, I noticed you're going to clean up down there. Are you going to have room for all these people down there?
Yes, once we move the filing cabinets, there's an office that's being currently used as a conference room. The technical needs and offices. We'll be able to move the conference room outside where those cabinets sit, and then we'll have another office.
All right. Thanks for that.
Could you go back, just out of curiosity, could you go back to that one thing where, because you had said that we need to come all the way up to that blue line, which I don't think that that's really right because Austin is tier-two, or we're barely tier-two. Could you go back to that comparison, or compare that to the other?
Can you go back?
Hold on one second. That one, yeah, I mean that one. Because like, because like this is comparing, you have Lampasses on your land, and your land is way up, but then you've got Houston in the same tier. Is that like?
The city of Houston County is not the same.
Houston town, there.
So if you look at the blue line, the blue line represents the populations. And then our budget is, there are different color blue lines, I should have made them two different colors, sorry. But we tried to pull, because that's been a question a lot, that we're just barely hitting that tier-two. So we tried to pull other tier-two appraisal districts that are within our close to our population to show their budgets versus their population so that we can kind of see where we are. Keep in mind, a lot of these are not dual appraisal districts. They do just appraisal, not collection and appraisal.
Yeah, most of these up here do not collect, they just do appraisal. So we're in a dual office, and that's where it becomes a little bit difficult. The amount of people that are needed to collect, I can tell you that we've got three staff, three staff members in there. That's an all-day, all-year process. The appraisal part is just two Appraisers and myself, so it's not just three people on one side. We can.
So out of the ten people, how many would be, you only had three collect, you only had three collections, and then you had the other seven doing Appraisers.
Right.
And right now, what do y'all have, three doing collections still?
So what if our appraisal supervisor is currently helping with exemptions, which is an appraisal task, which we're moving to take over because if they fall behind on the collection side because she's trying to help us on ours?
Our collection supervisor. This is the one that's currently doing the exemption, taking the exemption. That is actually an appraisal district function, and it's being done by our collection.
Two questions, sorry. We're fully on the budget, right? The return on investment, you're saying it surpasses. I mean, we would make money by having a ten-person team. And also too, what is your personal opinion on why the turnover rate is so high after appraisal?
Why is it so high?
Yeah.
So in the past, I mean, when they've left, what we've heard is pay and the workload. And that's been consistent across everyone. We have just had an Appraiser that I've had for a year leave for a job that has a lot less workload, and he is going to be making a lot more money a year, so. And that's been consistent since I got there in twenty-two.
So it's part of your budget request to pay the benefits also?
What did y'all spend in comp time? Go back to that.
Last year, they said eight hundred and fifty-five hours.
Which was seventeen thousand dollars, that's good.
Yeah, and I don't think that includes the Chief Appraiser that was just a staff at that time.
Correct, and it hurts us because then we have to shake off. We get to a certain point, they cut dogs off comp time, and I get an hour and a half off for every hour extra that I work. It's just like, so it hurts us in the long run because we're working extra, but we can't keep up. So a lot of us still just roll that like we still have it. We can't take off because we can't take off the time.
If you're at Chief Appraiser to that, what do you think?
I can tell you, I've been here about six months now, and just like Andrew said, the workload is pretty extreme. And we stay late, we work in months, we work on weekends. I'm not even keeping track of my hours, but the workload is very extensive.
I would say you could probably add another two fifty and three hundred because she kept up with the pandemic.
Something I thought here is, do you need to add two or could you give out one? Because like you were saying a little ago, a fifty thousand dollar employee, once you're all in on that person, that might cost you dollars. I mean, seventeen, thirty thousand dollars is cheaper.
It may be cheaper, but in the end, the work that's not being done directly is a lot, you're losing a lot more than what you could think.
So this is the comp time that we had, and we couldn't finish reappraisal. We haven't even started that, so.
Eight hundred and fifty-five hours is, twenty-eight is a full workload year, so. That's only a half of full workload year, which is comp time. I just wonder why one person work, adding one person work, does that exceed?
Correct, but you're not looking at the fact that they're doing work two to three years back. This is not keeping us current. This doesn't keep us compliant, it doesn't keep us current with the current rules of, that we have by law, we have to stay compliant.
I mean, this isn't an overnight fix, I mean, it's not going to happen immediately because we're so far behind. So it just seems like, Mr. Eric was saying, I agree with him. It seems like you could do a lot with one person and see how that does, and then see if you need a second person like following you.
I don't think it can be done. I've been doing this for seventeen years. I've worked in three other appraisal districts that needed my help, very similar to Lampasses. I'm going to be honest with you, this is the hardest job. This is the toughest job that I've had. You have a lot of problems. The problems that we're just giving you here is just the very, the very, the very, very small issues. There are a lot of issues in Lampasses now. And this is not costing you, this is not costing you taxpayers and not costing you more money. This is the same tax rate that you had for 2024. And these problems have been here longer than 2020. What we know, what I've seen is that from 2020, the appraisal district has not been compliant. And we can't, we don't have the records a little further back than that. It's probably never been compliant for twenty years or longer.
My question, on that slide that talked about the parcels that are not, have not been assessed. And can you go back to how much you saw of potentially being able to gather income? If those are wrong.
Just, this is your city of Lampasses. We're averaging nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars in just those twenty-one corrections that we made. If you take the one oh five or one oh six, an average of five hundred and fifty-five dollars. What we're finding is about five hundred and fifty-five dollars in at least a parcel, average.
And if you had two Appraisers, would you be able to catch up more?
Yes.
Be able to catch up to where we should be? Would that happen this year or next year?
No, so what we're doing right now, we've changed the dynamic of going to new. So what we're currently looking for is we're looking for the new value that is in that. So they found three hundred homes already this year, and those were missed last year in the prior year. And then we're looking, and then we're starting to work backwards. So they already have another fifty or eighty homes new right now that they're not at. So we're going to keep working, we're going to keep working throughout the year to try to catch up. And then on top of that, we're doing the corrections and we're trying to reappraise property at the same time.
Before I get, one year ahead, when you come back next year for that budget to be approved the following year, do you expect that these problems, these corrections that have, will be all already caught by new?
We can, the last appraisal district that I worked in, they had forty-five hundred missing parcels. We brought it down, we were averaging about five hundred corrections per year. Once we, same thing here, when we came in, Lampasses had thirty-eight hundred, thirty-nine hundred. We were already dwindling that down. But unless you're paying an army to do it, you cannot do more than five hundred corrections per year. So, but that takes five years to fix, less than four years to fix thirty-five hundred corrections. So we're already fixing ones that could be fixed. We're now digging through the ones that are almost impossible to fix.
It's a lot of deep research. I also have to get them through training in order to start helping them fix. So I don't think that it's going to be an instantaneous thing. I think it's going to be a program, or we're just going to have to continue to hack away at it. But these parcels that are missing are ones that we don't have these on file. We have to send somebody over to do deep research, which we never had time to do in our office. And then we're going to have to have them mapped out if we do that. So we may have to go try to find surveys, we'll do surveys. And there's a lot of work in just finding the ones that are left of our homes.
Yeah, this is a hard, what's left right now, we've already gone through the easier ones, right now we have the very difficult ones to do.
So these are three hundred homes that have never, that you haven't collected on several years, that probably that's.
So they're on the roll, but we don't have a map. So if there's not an address on the file, or I don't know where the house is, I can't go see if there's add-ons. I can't see if they've been remodeled. I can't see if they've added a shop, another home on the property. A lot of things that we did in Lampasses this last year when we tried to get through the reappraisal just in the city to change over the new codes. We found numerous houses where there were secondary units on the property that we didn't have taxed that they're now using as rental income, and it was free. And I can only go back three years when I find them, and some of these houses were there five percent of years.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. If you have any more questions, reach out and how to get you those numbers on which you're projected to lose in 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, can we motion to adjourn workshop?
Go move it.
Same. And we will call a record session. Before we do that, does anybody need to take a break? All right, we will call a record session to the board. All right.
Let us pray. Dear heaven, it's probably couldn't be more grateful to be in the state of the communities that we call home tonight. We ask that you be with us. We take care of the people's business. We ask for some good exchange of information, some great ideas, and some good decisions we make in the presence of all your people, which is always your goal. We appreciate it. We ask that you give us our sins, our tortures, and safety, to meet again, as in always, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Blessings and blessings.
Blessings to the United States of America. To the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all. Under the Texas light, blessings to the native Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We will start, uh, the side committee with our public citizens. Comment to any citizen who desires to address the city council matter not included on the agenda may do as you decide, but the city council may not deliberate on this item presented under the agenda item. And we have a question.
Mayor, Council. Just a couple of things. Uh, something to my attention today that went under no circumstances, these are a, a way to put many small houses in this one year. Uh, no matter how well it's built, I can't put one here. As the mayor knows, the building baggers built a house that probably exceeds the building codes of ninety, ninety-five percent of the houses that are now positions inside our city limits. But I can't put it anywhere. Because it doesn't make them square footage. So I think that needs to be addressed quickly because there's a lot of, uh, potential development. Uh, many houses are taking over. I can't put this house that is built, like I said, to meet standards anywhere. But I can move a six hundred square foot travel trailer into a trailer house that's forty years old and that's, that's fine. I can do that. But I can't put this house anywhere inside our city limits. And I think that needs to be addressed, needs to be addressed quickly. Because there's a lot of demand for that. And, uh, just came to my attention, I just want to throw this out, uh, based on an observation of the presentation that you just gave by the appraisal district. From the graphics that I've seen, uh, added workload seems to be, uh, caused primarily by the taxing entities other than the city. Uh, so that added workload should be picked up. I need to these that are actually, uh, gonna collect these added funds. Uh, the three hundred housing subdivision that's going on in Copperstoke, all that property over there, that seems to be, in my opinion, needs to be addressed with funds from the school, but not the city. Because, uh, you haven't had three hundred homes built in the city in the last two years. So from a percentage standpoint, this is just need talking about, you know, the taxing entity should contribute uh, an amount to the budget up to, but not to exceed the amount of work or caused by the taxing. If, if the city of Landpasses is not causing this workload in this place, I don't think it should be paying for it. It should be done on a percentage basis. Just on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Citizens commented, citizens who desire to address the city council on a matter of that is included on the agenda and may do so at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Gill. Uh, first of all, to say that I am pro-business. I'll say that I'm pro-business as, uh, for the city. And so, but I'm also, I've been, as, as a business owner, as a property owner in the city, I've been required to do sort of things. And zoning is one of those things that I take fairly seriously. Um, so looking at the proposed use, um, for the smoke shop at five oh one, A South Key, which means it's going to be one section of that sixteen hundred square foot building. Um, it's actually owned by Rogio Town Holding Company Incorporated, not Eddie Shell as it is in the minutes. At least that's what the L.P.A. says. And the square footage is sixteen hundred. I would bring your attention, and I don't have notes because there, the June fifth planning commission notes have not been published yet that I could see. So I don't know how they evaluated the location. Some of the retail, if you look at zoning, off-street parking, thirty-six section of the zoning ordinance, and specifically thirty-six point six point four seven, which is retail space, you require two hun, per two hundred square feet, you're required to have one parking spot. Now, we know that corner is busy. We know that corner doesn't need, you know, South Go, South Go running in there. And right now, if he's at a minimum of eight hundred square foot, I've never been in the building, but I assume that this is brief, um, at the planning, zoning condition. But he's only renting one portion of it. So by that code, um, and as a general use, he would require a minimum for parking spots. And there's five out there. But he's only going to be renting half of that, that building. So again, I'm not trying to keep this, but the requirements are stated as such. I just don't know what the planning zoning committee used for their parking, off-street parking requirements. And if anybody can tell me what that was. But I would ask that, if I'm even close to being correct, could we go back and relook at the parking for that area? Because like I said, being on that busy corner and not having the required parking spaces, um, would be difficult to have right there in that busy intersection. You were about to.
So I'll just add, um, parking is per building, not per unit. However, there is also parking a lot of time with the building and stuff. So there's parking spots in the front and then parking space in the rear.
Okay, so that's as part of that building for five oh one. Okay. See, there you go. That was easy enough.
And then in terms of the minutes, they're not shared until after the next meeting.
Right, I was just making observation. Okay, well, it's even, it's even. I just, thank you.
Thank you.
We're waiting for the public hearing. They're, they're actually commenting on the public hearing. So we go ahead and call the public hearing open and then just register comments.
Public hearing received citizens' comment regarding requests to consider specific use permit for property described as W sixty-two of blocks seven dash eight, block forty-seven of A H Barnes. In addition, commonly known as five oh one eighth South Key Avenue, Landpasses, Texas County, will allow for a public shop.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This was stated to the planning commission last Thursday on the fifth. Um, they did vote six to one, there was one in opposition. And at the time, we had only received one letter in opposition from church. Uh, I did receive two letters in opposition from the same person today. Uh, so they weren't presented that the planning zoning need, however, they added to the packet. But this, there's this specific use permit to allow for a smoke shop. That was all that was presented. We don't need anything further than that. There is sufficient parking. Um, and it fits in all of our zoning regulations out there.
I'm still trying to figure out what building this is. It's five oh one. Is this, what is?
It's on, it's where the Springs Pool is.
So that's where the parking system is.
Right, so there's a little road on the side of that building that goes back into their market. Any other questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I'm in. Oh, yeah, I'm in. Come back. Uh, I'm two properties. We're gonna block up here. Again, pro-business, I'm about as pro-business as the next person. Uh, I, I understand it's probably a done deal here, but I've also seen pictures of what the gentleman's supposed to be selling there. And I'm not sure that's, uh, that is what happened during the last smoke shop that's been on. Basically, it's just in his product. I don't know how many of you have actually been into the smoke shops that are here and already in town. Uh, I just don't think it fits our community standards. Again, I, I know it's probably too late to stop this, but, but you don't have to go into the smoke shop over by Walmart to look at the window and see that it's full of water pipes and crack pipes and whatever they are. But, uh, I just don't think this fits the community standards. I think we can do better. I think we should do better. Uh, and there are ordinances that can be made in the future that need this sort of thing. But I don't think anybody would vote for it if it was ever put on a, on an actual ballot somewhere. It's just things that happen that we can't stop. I don't think it's good for our community. Key Avenue, we're trying to do something with Key Avenue. Every time you try to fix something up, and then something like this comes along. Again, I think it's, uh, it's out of your control at this point because the ordinances are there. They're your consideration in the future. I'd like to see some things put into place that might actually elevate the standards of the community rather than my opinion over this way.
I can actually have a personal public comment. Um, with everything that I see at the schools and the problems that we have with vaping, with the nicotine vapes and the THC vapes and the kids going into DAP, I just can't personally get behind another smoke shop or vape shop.
I, I would agree with Kathy on this. I mean, in her great years, there was a battle, constant battle. Um, and I kind of have to ask ourselves too, is that's community, what direction are we moving? I mean, we have a key avenue is our, our main drag, right? That's where everyone sees everything. If, if we have businesses that are promoting things that, I mean, this is personal disagreements with, but you know, what direction do we serve community going? Are we, are we pursuing, um, um, actually in communities with, you know, the COVID ideas or the Georgia ideas? What direction are we gonna go here? You know, what kind of people are we gonna encourage to our community by what we have seen as we're driving that issue?
Yeah, what's it, uh, she, coming to what's, I mean, majority of our referrals up there at the high school, whether it's R.O.s. The majority of the referrals, whether it's R.O.s at the high school, and there are a lot of vape referrals that come down to county attorney or agency or government.
Sure, I'm chomped up. I had, in there, some of the plastic industry years, small offices, smaller industry years, but, uh, but that's the last few years. Preserving is for some type of vape or some kind of substance use or some kind of op. They're fogging. Ones and shapes are more than I can imagine. This business here in particular was, uh, trying to replace the vape system. They can use to, we can count that substance, that preserving, that's how we use at our high school. Plus a lot of activity and it's a lot of work. The administrators and the police officers are quite eager on that basis. Although difficult to determine exactly what's in there. It's something that could be illegal, whether the exact substance is. But the labs that test these items are overwhelmed. You also got much more stringent as far as what the lighting testing, these labs, it puts it back on us. The difficulty in determining if it's something illegal, how illegal, it's, it's just become a real problem.
And David, I can answer your question. This, this year, just during the last two weeks of summer school, they've already had like six different vaping incidents. And just sent the other day, that ended up being THC with a fit zero in the start of the year or DAP, because they can't have summer school at the tutorials. It's my understanding that Senator, the twenty twenty-five has changed that for with the chop shops not including THC?
That's correct.
So there has been some recent change in legislation that would change what we sell. I mean, the kid, the thing is, is the kids are still getting the nicotine vapes, are getting involved with the nicotine vapes and THC vapes. The THC vapes aren't coming from, because the THC vapes that the kids are getting caught with aren't coming from the vape shops, but the nicotine vapes are. How do we make a change to this owner in the middle of, um, others having been approved under the same ordinance? I'm waiting to get some.
Discussion a little bit more during the action item on the agenda right now, this is a public hearing for. And I, and I get the citizens in terms of, but the discussion itself should be held for the next proportion of the.
Okay, we're getting the ordinance without the vape shop, is that correct?
So when we get to that item on the agenda, I'll explain the expenses or the fines that the council needs to make if they're not going to a group of guests.
And I, I would also go on record too that it's, uh, we're familiar in the town. I don't think it's good for our kids. It's not good for our families. And, uh, it's certainly not good for the drug we're dealing up now in Landpasses, so it's not here we are. All right, no other discussion. We'll go on to two point one, discussion possible action regarding the approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and special meeting held on June second, twenty twenty-five.
That's it, President Peter.
Sir. Any discussion? All in favor? Discussion possible action regarding purchases and charges in excess of four thousand dollars from May first, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Regime of approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
City manager's operational report.
Mayor and Council, we've lightly seen the wayfinding signs that are going up throughout town. Um, today fifteen signs have been installed. Two signs are awaiting the completion of the construction on two eighty-one. The downtown wayfinding signs, which signs eighteen through twenty-two, are waiting on the decorative hooks and racks to be delivered with anticipated arrival end of July. Charlie, I did email text out for an update and have not heard anything back from them on that. So Paul does have others open house, I didn't see that.
I had a question on the wayfinding signs because I did notice that they're commonplace, bunch of places for where you need to turn, which didn't make sense to me. And I also noticed that lots of Key Avenue have omitted the Hannah Springs Sculpture Garden, which is the number one tourist destination when you Google Landpasses. And so I was wondering how that got left off and if it could be put on.
I will have to go back and check. I believe all of those signs were presented to council in November.
They were presented, like all of the sign not presented. It was just like, how does this work?
Okay. I will do some follow-up on it. I don't have anything to be changed at this point. I just had to process some text out to get the approval for where those signs go. Um, so I'm not sure how that.
Did they bring?
Yeah, pretty.
So you guys are pretty good at that.
One thirty-six. All right. And the final capital improvement committee meeting, um, should be this Thursday at noon. They have their buildings, the academy members are currently prioritizing the proposed capital improvement, um, projects that will then come to council for consideration for FY twenty-eight six. And Landpasses Public Libraries and Full Swimming and Summer Programming. Today, they held a celebration recognition of having one thousand children, so that's the Golden Markens Imagination Library. This Friday at ten AM, they'll be hosting a touch and truck event. There'll be, um, several city events that are involved in that. And on June thirtieth, they will be hosting a finale film party, which is quite popular, from ten thirty till eleven thirty PM for children.
Just about the comments, uh, I know myself and council's probably received a lot of calls. I know I have over the last week, week and a half. And, and, uh, I just wanted to ensure our citizens that our council is committed to Landpasses. They're doing the very, very best job they possibly can. And, uh, with their staffing issues and safety, our finances that we talked about tonight, we've got a breakdown. We've got, uh, uh, so many different groups there are down. We've got, uh, so many different groups here in town that are committed to Limpassas. And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going forward. We're gonna make good decisions. And the Limpasses is gonna continue to move forward. And those are just a, just a few comments I wanted to make this evening. And then we'll move on with new business, discussion of possible action regarding the selection of winner of the website focal contest.
Make a motion to enter two.
Sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Here it is. 7.2, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of award to Miller Service Company for the installation of a deck mini split unit in Jack Albert Municipal Building and Server Room.
Mayor and Council, you recall my long ago, the chairman was not functional in this building. And it did cause some concerns for the IT department in what might happen to the AV equipment that was been missing if any of us within, should there be an outage for longer or when it's hotter. The equipment runs very hot, and so they're super concerned about a backup system for when they need maintenance. We are required by purchasing policy to get three quotes in prices over $2,500, so Monica has done that. Our low bid came from Miller Service Company and they have $2,980 for the installation of a deck mini split in the server room.
I would like to move to choose Miller Service Company and the amount of $29,800 to install the mini split.
It's $2,000.
Twenty nine, $2,980.
Sir.
Any, any discussion?
Oh. On Miller's, it says not to improve or remove the existing new split. Is that what means to happen?
Monica reached out for clarification. I'm not sure.
It, it does not include.
Does it mean we remove, you know what I'm saying? Is that a additional cost?
They, the way I understood it, it's not, we replace this whole system and this building, then they will take it out. Like, it will need to be removed whenever the whole system gets replaced with one. But until then, it's fine.
When I compare the, the quotes, I want to simply brief out the place that Miller's did not include as much on the label. Want to, as much as, except for the last two years, eighteen, and nine, because of that. Other than that, um, my staff, it's like, they'll put everything else that's detailed in the other two quarters. Do you know how much the cost would be to remove it?
I do not know the cost of removing the existing equipment and we have to upgrade the entire building at maybe a simple expense.
So where is, where is the equipment that's needed?
If you'll recall, um, when we were talking about repair versus replacement, there's some freon transitions right now. So it'd be a couple of years. So it was actually recommended to run the system, the big system for the building, several more years before replacing the entire maintenance. So we're looking three to five years for that replacement.
So we're looking at that, because we need to defer.
Actually, we would go ahead and install that. It will just be operational with the old unit in there and at that time.
We've got a motion and second. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
7.3, discussion of possible action regarding the approval perceived of the structural review of the slide at Hannah Springs Pool.
Mayor and Council, we were informed and Loopy, you're welcome to, if you want to, with our consent. We're informed by TML this year that we need every five years more thorough inspection on the slide that's at the pool. We did have an annual review of it, but this one's a little more thorough than what we've needed before. It was not budgeted for this year. It was kind of a surprise to us when we found out that we did this every five years. So there is, Loopy did a really good job of trying to find someone. If we do this particular side inspection for it, so we contacted five people and only one was willing to submit a bid on it. Um, and they have taken the ownership of a pool service, something that we have regularly use for maintenance and supplies at the pool. So it is someone that we will have an ongoing relationship with in the future. There is available funding in our building grounds and equipment maintenance to cover this expenditure.
So this wasn't a motion, I don't think it just came from.
Correct. We got it in January, we were going to have this.
And this, uh, this inspection was required on January the first of 2025. Um, that's when we notified. And I did sit with our inspector, Jimmy, our inspector, Dr. Jimmy Bill. And he said that, I told him that they sounded a little expensive, and he says, yes, so sorry, because it's a third-party engineer inspector.
I missed the howl from you, because they're hot.
Aggregators.
You're in this on where?
And it will go into a building and ground maintenance, and we'll have to take some money from the equipment.
Make a motion to approve staff initiative structural inspection by third-party. And ask the person's whole slide to not exceed $5,000.
Any other discussions? All in favor? Discussion of possible action regarding the purchase of two new soccer goals to be used in five A's sports complex.
Mayor and Council, the soccer goals at five A are in disrepair. Um, staff didn't get the quotes to have them repaired. And in the low bid, that would be about $3,000, John, we're making wrong on that. So they did go to the buy board to look at purchasing two new soccer goals. They are removable, allowing them to be taken down and then not being used to prevent damage in continuous wear and tear. The cost was $6,500, and that vendor is on the buy board, so that is a low competitive price verified by the state. There is existing funding in, um, that building and grounds for the five A complex to purchase the goals.
So these are still prepared for re-buying, two pair for buying one pair, two goals?
Two new goals.
So one pair?
One pair, yes.
Make a motion to approve purchasing two soccer goals to exceed this.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. So what, because the soccer goals, they're metal, right? They're like welded metal, so what happened to the ones that are out there now, doing that, just yours?
Um, the, the current ones that are there have a lot of weld cracking and stuff, so they cannot be tested. Uh, some rust and stuff from exposure. The new ones, they're actually powder coated aluminum on the front and the rear poles are actually galvanized. And as everyone's saying, these will go to be taken up after used, after games scored inside to keep them out of the elements. To keep better protected. And that also includes new nets, which the old goals do need new nets. And I remember, I think those were, for the regulation, those were about $500 in net, so that's included.
So is there some awareness here, or something people tear it up?
Uh, probably a little both. I think they get used a lot of times during, out of game time and people playing on them, whatever takes place out there, so.
Where are we gonna put them up?
What?
Where are we gonna put them up?
Uh, the five A sports complex, soccer field.
Where?
They're, they're gonna store, in the parts, uh, parts bay.
So y'all are gonna take these down like every, after every game? I mean, because I, I use soccer coach, so this is, this is expected to be able to take these down.
Yeah, I, there are other goals and other, uh, facility facilities use, but these specific ones for game type stuff will, will be taken in. That's something Stephen, every place, parts rep.
So y'all have goals for everyone that still uses all the time, exactly special goals for.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? 7.5, discussion of possible actions to consider approval, allow for approval for qualifications. A request considers specific use permanent for property described in as West W62, block 78, 47 of the A H Barnes Edition, commonly known as 501A South Key Avenue, Limpassas, Texas, County, to allow for a smoke shop.
Mayor and Council, um, as you recall, we did, means they did approve this with a 61 vote last week. Just maybe for a little bit of background, in 2016, the council did a block ordinance approving vape and tobacco shops in retail and commercial areas with an SUP. So that has been on the vote since 2016. If the council chose to deny this SUP, it can be on the basis of five reasons. And you have to stay in your motion that you find that afflicts this reason, and then you would vote some more. So those reasons are, um, that the use is not harmoniously compatible with surrounding existing uses or proposed uses. That the activities requested by the applicant are not normally associated with permitted uses in the base district. That the nature of the use is unreasonable. You can take into account negative impact on the surrounding area. And that any additional conditions specified ensure that the intent of the district purposes are being upheld.
Could you repeat the following?
Sure. Um, so, and let me, let me read this reason a little bit, different the way it's written, because I'm having to flip the verbiage for denial. So if you are approving it, um, the city council may consider the following. So if it's approved, that the use is harmoniously compatible with surrounding existing uses or proposed uses. So take into account what's around that building. The activities requested by the applicant are normally associated with permitted uses in the base district. That the nature of the use is reasonable. Any negative impact on the surrounding area has been mitigated. And that any additional conditions specified ensure that the intent of the district purposes are being upheld. So if this city is going to deny that, you have to find the, the first of those.
Well, I move to deny on the basis of the use of the surrounding area, be it that the church across the street didn't want this.
And, and the school.
And the, and the school, but the school's not that close, but.
Well, I mean, it's the, they do, the children's lot, for.
Oh, that's right. It's a good school, yes.
I'm sorry, I missed part about where the school is. The, it's, the first stop is school. The school was right directly, the school inside the church and the church directly across the street were against it. And I feel that it goes against the area.
I do need to add, there is a gas station directly across the street on Fourth Street that also sells tobacco products. So if you are going to deny on that basis, we would have to do something about the existing gas station as well.
Chief, I have this question for you. Vape shops, are they allowed to sell something under a certain percentage of THC currently?
Currently, yes.
So with the preschool being directly across the road, being a preschool, that would be considered a drug-free zone? Is that correct?
Yes.
Does the convenience store on the northeast corner of that intersection, do they sell THC products under that certain level?
I don't know that off the top of my head. That's not one that I've read myself. Great, and I don't remember a case report related to what you're asking coming from, from that particular business recently.
So that might be an ordinance that we need to, I'm looking at changing if we deny this, is that?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, is it even allowed if there's a certain percentage of THC in a product in a drug-free zone? Is that still allowed? Or do you have the answer to that?
If it's not illegal to possess.
Yes, I understand your question. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I don't recall it being an issue in any of the other cases that someone had a product that was legally purchased that was under the THC amount. But yet, were they close enough to a drug-free zone? I'm gonna have to say that if it's legal to possess it, it's not illegal to have it near a drug-free zone because it's not going to be illegal drug. If it's over the THC amount, that could be a higher offense to get in a drug-free zone. But I don't know that for a fact with this particular drug, if I'm going to look it up. I don't remember that coming as a set. But I may have to worship that.
If I can add as well, the business that's wanting to come in is tobacco paste. Their name is literally something tobacco for lean. Uh, I can't confirm that they don't have THC products, but I do know that for the most part, they're running tobacco-based paints.
Well, when they have a, a vape, I think that encompasses a lot of different things. I mean, that's something that I would vape if I drive by one of those places. Okay, we have a motion? Well, to me, it sounds like there's a lot of questions. It still may be answered to the justice table.
And how Haley was saying that, that the motion, I'm gonna have to remove my motion because from what Haley was saying, that since the convenience store that's already there is selling vapes, then my motion wouldn't work. Is that how you understand that?
It, it questions the basis of your motion.
Now, you did, you did mention the negative impact on the area based on that. But, and then would you say this vape shop will be a negative impact? And then also the one on the corner, be a negative impact?
My, my question though is, because like, an entire shop based on vaping is a negative impact to, I feel, the church and the, the school. The convenience store, yes, they have some of those products, but that's not what they're advertising, the only thing that they sell.
I think you have to determine the negative impact. It has, the negative impact has to be to property, not to people, not to individuals. The negative impact to deny this has to be based on property. So is it decreasing property value?
Well, I would say that there's preschool right across the street and there would be a negative impact enough.
But, but it has to be to the property, not to the individuals.
So it's a negative impact too. It would be a negative impact on the church. I mean, he believed that in his, you know, protest of the property. Because his, because the church and the pastor protested this and believed it to be a negative impact. And I believe that too. And that's why I wanted to deny it.
You can say that in the form of your question.
My question is on, on vaping, and I don't know about genuine, so I don't know what's sent, but there are vape shops that do not sell anything related to THC. And so for us to assume that this is going to be a THC vape shop, it's not, we don't know that.
No, and that's not, I'm, I'm saying a vape shop in general. I'm not saying anything about THC.
So you've got some, um, nicotine products or something else.
Being that with the person to be to the church and the school, yeah. I don't think that's something those kids need to see every single day.
So.
I wonder if we couldn't get some more information back on. What additional information would you like from me to get?
Uh, some of the things that Dave was talking about on, on some of the new legislation. I'd like to have more background on 2025 Senate Bill, you know, the prescriptions are there.
But, but it doesn't have anything.
Well, it's, I, this doesn't really have anything to do with whether what they're putting in the vapes. It just has to do with the fact that it's a vape shop, be it nicotine, be it whatever, because it's just for the vapes.
Hmm, I understand.
If it's helpful, I can reach out and ask the potential business owner, come. If it's helpful, I can reach out and have the potential business owner come and answer questions if that might happen. It, it doesn't seem like the problem is with its potential business, it's the, the area.
Sounds weird, like we don't know what, what it's selling, I think that would be a question. It does not, what is the nature and intent of the business sets?
So can, can we table this, attend other? So I'm with the table. That's table.
Okay, we have motion table. Second. All in favor? Seven point six, discussion of possible action regarding reimbursement for the hot funds requested by the county of Land Passes Rodeo Association in amount of ten thousand dollars for event expenses related to the Rialto Roundup Rodeo on April twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This item went to you guys in February twenty twenty-five. You approved the reimbursement for the Rialto Roundup uh rodeo for the amount of ten thousand dollars. Alexis brought this to us this week with her receipts. Uh staff and I have received it and reviewed it and everything looks to be in good condition. So she's now wanting her reimbursement.
Is there any way that we can see like their profit on this?
You can, what would you like to know?
Obviously, you know, I mean, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money for reimbursement, and I mean.
It costs us about sixty seven thousand dollars with all the progression.
And what, and what was the income of the program?
Uh, this school, you know, when everything's in, um we, I know everything was even. We'll probably make enough to uh carry a few donations to the cowboy church that really helped us work the gangs in the hospitality area. And uh really potentially just put a couple thousand dollars maybe at best back into the area.
What, what was the total amount of revenue that you guys generated?
It's gonna be somewhere around sixty, sixty plus thousand.
Okay. So on here it shows your goal is this is forty-four thousand ninety-nine eighty-five cents according to this report.
And from what I understand is the hot funds are supposed to be for advertising and I'm looking on the advertising, unless I'm missing something. I'm seeing a hundred and fifty for the newspaper, seven hundred and fifty other, which I'm not sure what that's for, and six hundred and fourteen for social media, so that's only fifteen, fourteen in advertising?
Hot funds legally could be used for advertising, promotion of the arts, convention, visitors center, um and also for a bit, uh expenses associated with sporting events in your community.
And when we did this report, it was promotional advertising, staffing, restroom, flat power, and public. Just think about this, the, the item says. And adding those numbers up, that's right in line with what we, what we were moving forward.
Well, that was my quick see before, she didn't have a big breakdown and from what, how I understood it, how we've always done hot funds is specifically for advertising to get those heads and beds, that we haven't used hot funds to fund projects.
I think just because that's the way that we've always done it, that it hadn't always followed the letter of the law that hot funds could be used for.
Well, with the way that the hot funds are, I mean, I feel like, like, because she's got advertising, social media, she did more. She did a whole lot less advertising than what she had budgeted um with newspapers and magazines.
Council, if you can look at page eight of your packet. I'm looking at page six to, go look at fifty-eight. Item number six, sporting related expenses in the regular dispensary for some of the events substantially increases economic activity of their areas. And that's from our allegation.
Do you know what the economic impact was?
Sixty, sixty thousand dollars is, yeah, money generated.
That's not, that was costs, total costs.
That would be, yes.
But the economic impact that she had in there.
We, we, we haven't been able to figure that out. I mean, even, even with your, any of the tax that's brought in, I don't know how far behind that schedule is on sales tax and stuff like that or any economic impact. But it's not gonna quantify it to a certain weekend either, it'll just give us a month. And I'm sure it might be able to answer that better, I'm not sure.
Well, sales taxes were for two months in a row, and there's a lot of kinds of taxes recorded for three months in a row.
I just, I just feel like for what was done in advertising to get people here, I just feel like committing ten thousand dollars in hot funds without the documentation of, of, I just feel like we're opening a can of worms.
I was, I was looking at some of the costs they had, I think would be considered a part of these funds. Like the, uh, they had several rentals of restaurants, sort of tents. And uh it looks like some equipment, so that would seem to fit.
So then when spring comes, are we gonna pay for all of their toilets, all their court parties? It makes the same kind of thing. So you start opening and paying for restaurants and stuff over advertising, then all the other people doing, doing events are gonna start coming for more and more hot funds, do we have those hot funds available?
Also not with consideration of advertising that on the public side, I don't know.
Well, this is taking into consideration that this is the first year that the county of Land Passes Rodeo Association has taken over this rodeo. And hot funds are intended to try and get new organizations up on their feet. So I would expect that next year, we wouldn't ask for this motion.
That is the intention of the law.
And we can previously say, hey, we're not going to allow it.
Item two on page fifty-eight also states that furnishing facilities, personnel, materials for registration of convention, delegate accommodations, the bathrooms, cell phones, things that they're asking for reimbursement for, it all fits in this category of options.
But my other question too is, this isn't the first time this Rialto Roundup has been held, have we given ten thousand dollars to the chamber for this in the past?
I can remember a few.
We will.
It's first time it's been held at our, too, yeah.
It's not the first time, it's the first time for rodeo section association to examine.
We do reimburse the chamber for several events, we can't confirm that we reimburse for this event.
We have reimbursed for this, but I don't think it's any worth it, any, anywhere near the ten, the ten thousand dollars.
I wanna say it was right under eight thousand dollars, seventy-six to seventy-seven hundred dollars. But again, that's a different organization, it's brand differently, I think, I think it was a four-day event as opposed to a two-day event. There were a lot of things different that we did as opposed to the chamber.
What sort of balance?
We're maintaining a two hundred thousand dollar balance in hot funds, just, just.
A hundred, um.
Two hundred thousand is the initial council mandated balance for hot funds. Um we do have for, that, well, I, this is a budget that I have as far as grants outside public stations.
This is?
It does, all the people who have been budgeted for this this year.
Make a motion to reimburse county of Land Passes Rodeo Association, we came around ten thousand dollars in office. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, discussion of possible action regarding first reading of ordinance, mending Land Passes Code of Ordinance, Amendment to fee schedule chapter eighteen buildings and building regulations.
Mayor Council, this was discussed during our public hearing. We have some opinions on it and we have to make a motion. Just kidding, this is a disregard. This is, um, we had brought to you in March the ordinance to change the uh fees for our building ground, building compartment uh when we switched over to Bureau Bear Trust. It was brought and read one time, which is not allowed in our emergency uh single read ordinance agreement. Uh, so we had to change some verbiage on it, we changed the ordinance number. It's basically brand new to you, uh but it caused the same type of damage.
I'm speaking a little bit, I can't, I have a hard time.
Well, now we're finished, so um we just need to put the ordinance to change that building.
So are we, are we getting to the second reading? That if you change ordinance number when you start.
This is the first reading.
The, the verbiage is not there on the recommendation, but it is the first reading of this ordinance.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance, mending the Land Passes Code of Ordinance. Amendment to date, fee schedule chapter eighteen buildings, building regulations, matter of date of the first.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The city council, the city of Land Passes will meet in the closing executive session, took the Texas government code chapter five five one. Concision with the city attorney to seek advice of his attorney about pending contemplation, contemplative lit- litigation settlement offer for any matter which the duty of the attorney is to city council under the Texas professional rule. Rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas clearly conflict with Texas open meetings. Automohto, North America Avenue compliance of ordinance, section five five one, oh seven four, personnel matters for deliberate appointment, involvement, violation, reassignment duties, discipline, public officer or employees, city secretary, man or personnel matters as allowed by Texas government code, chapter five five one.
I do apologize, before we make that motion, uh we have to approve or deny the specificity requirement for the vape shop. We cannot table for another reason.
Make a motion to deny. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Second. In a motion to adjourn of the executive session, go move. All in favor? All right, we got a couple of items coming out of the executive session. We get a motion?
I'd like to move to resent the motion of the denial of the S U P.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And I'd also, the next motion I'd like to make is I'd like to make a motion and take no action on the S U P and I'd like the item placed on the next agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to oppose the city secretary position. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Better not say nothing.